You're watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 16th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Give everybody a second for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have called the meeting to order. If everyone's had an opportunity to look over the minutes, if anybody has any corrections that they see need to be made, please voice them now. And once you look them over, if I could get a motion to approve them, please.
You got a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion by Warren, seconded by Laura. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the fund report.
I'll just add quickly for you. Questions brought up before the meeting started about the lit fund being in the negative cash balance as we sit here today as the report was printed. Don't be concerned about that. That fund receives revenues once a month. It happens to be that the expenses with the payroll this month hit the calendar first before the revenue came in. We will watch that through the rest of the year. It is funded within the budget, which is what's important. Obviously, the cash is important too, but there are some times that I have to pose a little bit, so we'll keep an eye on it. And if at the end of the year we make any corrections, we certainly can switch a payroll to a different fund, even on November or something, but for now, it's all right.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. So that being said, can I get a motion to approve the fund report as presented?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Warren, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approve payment of the bills. Anything out of the ordinary, honestly? Can I get a motion to approve the payment of the bills, please?
I'll make the motion.
Chris, motion?
I'll second it.
Laura, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any correspondence this month?
No.
No correspondence? MS4?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Willby?
Just a couple things on the 1920s school spring, where I was able to track down some old correspondence. It looks like you took some things to enforcement, and there was an order. Unfortunately, the latest one was this 2021, and it got dismissed for lack of moving forward. But there was some correspondence between former council and an attorney, as Chief has indicated, indeed, that happens to administer a special needs trust. So I have reached out, waiting for a call back to confirm what their role is going to be. You know, ultimately, I would suggest that we send a letter after that if we don't get compliance from there. But I at least have the contact info for the trust, you know.
Awesome.
And then next, I'm talking with the clerk. The town received notice of a public hearing. It's a zoning matter for Michigan City. There's really nothing on here in terms of explaining, but I happen to know that it's going to be a tattoo shop, which generally meets the zoning, but they need a special exception, so.
Where's it going to be located?
Right across the car mark in the showroom in that parking lot there.
Got it.
Yeah, I think the body shop will understand, but making use of that. So really just explaining to you what that notice is, and if you want to remonstrate or send somebody to remonstrate on behalf of the town, it's in Michigan City. You receive notice because you likely own property that's adjacent or supporting that property.
Understand.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Engineer?
The engineer report is that there is no engineer report.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your attendance. Park department? No one from the park department?
No, I've got it. I've got it. The Amanda's in northern Michigan. Last month, we had the Centennial Festival. The turnout was low because it was 100 degrees, and it was really windy. It was bad. It was hot. The next meeting is next Monday at the library. By 3:00, I give Crystal. She's going to publish a notice. And we're in a, at that meeting, we'll discuss a possible fall festival.
Awesome.
Okay, so, and that's it.
Nice. So I do have a question, though. I know that there were some T-shirts that were printed for the Centennial Celebration.
Yes.
Do we know what happened to those, or?
Well, Crystal, were they delivered to you?
They were.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I wish I were there. Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, that solves that question, okay? Thank you. Building inspector is not present. Planning and zoning, there's nothing. That was me. Police department. Marshall Dick. Good evening.
Good evening. Real quick, to build on the Centennial Celebration, that was miserably hot. We still had a lot of people out there, and we took advantage, had some really good meaningful conversations. Anna from Kingsbury Heights came up, and she did talk to several people about car seat safety and proper installation. So we did get our message out there, and looking forward to the Fall Festival. You can count on our participation if you have that. Tuesday, August 6th, Michigan City is having a national light out. It used to be a national light out against crime, but I think they canceled or dropped the against crime, and now it's just a national light out. Chief Corley reached out to the surrounding agencies and invited us to participate. And of course, we're going to participate. So please, Tuesday, August 6th, by 8:00 p.m., 7th and Franklin Street down in Michigan City. Right now, our role is we're going to have a vehicle out there and trail free police presence as a, as a, not as a police, or a enforcement presence, but as a community relations presence.
What was the time?
Five to eight. And that's down on 7th Street, where they usually have the main part of the local parade. Lastly, I just want to finish up. We all now have our new email addresses. They're in force, and we're all using them. It's our first initial, last name, at trailcreekpolice.in.gov. Soon, we'll be working on getting at trailcreekpolice.in.gov website. And then Laura and I have talked about merging, so that when the town connects, then we'll have one website, and they'll be able to link to our website. This data actually gives us, for five years, I believe, of web support.
Actually, I found out, that's on my notes, it gives us 20th, or October of 2032 for free.
Oh, wow.
So it's more than five years.
It's eight years.
It's a five-year contract, two, two-year extensions.
Beautiful.
So.
Beautiful. So, yeah, so we're going to take advantage of that, and Laura's been looking into it, and the town is going to take advantage of that also.
Great.
So we'll start building on that and rebuilding our websites. We have something in-house that we can use and update ourselves and manage ourselves. That's all I've got.
All right.
Getting anything for me? No? Well, as always, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
All right, I have a very lengthy report from the street department. I'm going to blow through this as best as I possibly can. All right, equipment status. Plow dump trucks, there are no issues to report. Both are set up and for summer configuration. The three-quarter ton pickup trucks, there are no issues with those. Both are being used regularly during daily operations. Loader and bobcat, no issues. Also being used regularly as needed. The leaf machine. Currently at Brown Equipment Company in Fort Wayne, and has been repaired. Brown Equipment Company has provided a quote for trading in and/or buyback of our current machine in, in, machine, oh, yeah, traded in on two smaller machines that would keep us beneath our CDL requirement. Considering a variety of options regarding this machine coupled with our previously reported CDL issue. Lawn machines, Coyote and Chipper. Lawn machines and Coyote are in service. Chipper is available for use if and when it's needed. Mobile Generac generator is ready for use as needed. Yard waste toters and special pickup ivories, Borden refuse. Crystal previously spoke with a gentleman by the name of Eric. His name is Eric Ivory. He is the town representative from Borden. And he advised that if a resident needs or wants a yard waste toter, to call Borden directly, not to call the town hall or the street department. Eric explained that the toters will be issued only upon request from a resident at this time, and Borden will now account for the toters issued rather than the Trail Creek Street Department. As a reminder, use yard waste toter for the Friday pickup throughout the year. Yard waste containers may include grass clippings. Trail Creek Street Department does not collect grass clippings. Use your toter, please. Leaves, this is a change from our previous refuse provider, so yes, you may put leaves in the toter with your grass. Yard and garden debris, small and/or broken down sticks, limbs, branches. As long as they fit in the toter, that's great, then they can pick them up. Small logs, as long as they fit in the toter, and biodegradable sacks or paper bags. The town, Trail Creek Street Department does not pick up appliances, furniture, tires, household debris, items, et cetera. Please call Borden for special pickups, such as these, or use the large dumpster provided to town residents located inside the gated Trail Creek Street Department side yard. As I'm pretty sure I recall, every resident is allowed one large item per month, so you don't even have to call Borden to let them know. One large item per month, they'll pick it up, no questions asked. Town informational flyers, spring, fall flyers. Dave suggests that we develop and send out informational flyers to residents containing information such as our spring cleanup details, dates, and what will be collected. Yard waste toter info as listed above, fall leaf collection dates, et cetera. I totally agree with that. Roadways, pothole repair. Thus far this season, the Trail Creek Street Department has used four tons of asphalt cold patch in our efforts to repair potholes, and preparing to make another round of pothole repairs this week. Parks. Nelson Park, there's nothing to report. Condon Park. We've secured the gate leading into the tennis courts to restrict the use there, given the playing surface conditions. Dog slash Critts Park, nothing new to report. The town signs, the welcome signs, six of the seven new welcome signs have been installed, and he is awaiting a decision on the location of the seventh sign. Note, the six that are up have replaced all the original signs around the town, and there are no injuries to any employees. So that is the end of the Trail Creek Street Department report. Nurse?
No, it's for, for Monday.
Excellent. Old business. You're up again. Update on the town remodel.
Right, what we got going on, it would be tomorrow is the final inspection. Final inspection means that our city inspector, county inspector, contractors make the final walkthrough, and from that point on, everything, if it complies and everything's working, it is ours. And then we can make the process of transition back into the building. So we have had the floor waxed, did that this week or last week. And so it is already, today, let's see, today, I think they have the plumber come in to make the final connection with the sink and a little stove. Other than that, we are in contact with PJ. He's aware of what's going on. He's our IT guy. So we are, this time next, next month, we'll be having our meeting over there. And we thank Long Beach for allowing us to use their haul for the last couple of months.
I echo that sentiment.
But that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Warren. And you're up for one more time. So we're going to, under new business, second reading ordinance of the town of Trail Creek, LaPorte County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the Lit Public Safety Fund for the 2024 budget. You only need to read the title, correct?
You can do it by title, but you need to open your public hearing on this, on this consideration of this ordinance, I believe. And just to confirm that it has been published for public hearing this evening.
Yes, it was published.
So we opened up for a public comment?
Those who want to speak for or against?
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Have any no one come forward? We can close the public comment section, and Warren, if you could, please read the ordinance.
All right, here we go. Ordinance number 2024. Town of Trail Creek, Indiana, ordinance of Town of Trail Creek, LaPorte County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the Lit Public Safety Fund for the 2024 budget. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget in the Lit Public Safety Fund of town. And whereas the council is aware of the fund currently full sufficient cash balance and are expected to receive additional miscellaneous revenues throughout the year to support the requested additional appropriations, and now therefore being ordained by the town council of the Town of Trail Creek, LaPorte County, Indiana, that is hereby provided in order for the expenses of the taxing unit. The following additional sums of money are appropriated out of the fund name, subject to laws governing the same. The fund 2240 Lit Public Safety, 2243-70362, Lit forward slash repair and maintenance equipment of amount requested was 11,000. Amount approved by fiscal body was 11,000. Total for Lit Public Safety was 11,000. Again, amount approved by fiscal body was 11,000.
Motion.
Is that it?
Just need a motion and a second.
Yes.
That's your pleasure, one way or the other.
Yes. So I need a motion to approve the ordinance as presented by Warren.
I make a motion to approve, to accept it.
Laura makes a motion?
Second.
Warren, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Also under new business, the town website. Laura, I believe that's.
That is me. So I've been doing some research. I made one for Crystal, because this involves, sorry. So I've looked at the areas near us, with the exception of North Anna, which is Unibits. I think you all get junk email from them on the website. So currently, are in your emails. The first one is Beverly Shores. That is done by the site, Tyler Technologies, that has been approved by the state, and that will be free until 2032. The other one I like is Unibit, but I put the websites down so you can go check them out. And over at the right-hand side, I've got the cost and what info I've got. I've done a couple seminars with both Tyler Technology and Unibit. A couple at the bottom, the Town of Pines and Pot Park, I don't think we're interested in. Michigan Shores, we're definitely not interested in, because, oh, I'm sorry, in the Pines, it's not secure. And we don't, we don't need that. So if you guys would just look them over. Jen also wanted me to create a survey on Monkey Survey to ask the residents what they would like to have on this. And, and the, the only thing I'm disappointed about the, the first one is it does not have email or text directly. But they are, SHI, that's where you can, he's got his emails through them. They can set us up. Now, there will be a fee for that. I think you pay $500 annually? Yeah, that would be our cost at, at max. So if you just look all this.
That's before.
Right, yeah.
It's per, you've got it.
So it'd be a little more, but I think, I think the majority of it is in the setup cost, yeah. And we'll just have the town hall be the, you know, the biggest one. So if you guys would just review that, and then I'll create the survey and show it to Jen, and then we'll get it out on the website.
Okay.
And then we'll advertise that. So that's about all I have right now.
All right. Thank you. Are you the annual garage sale also?
I am also, because I talked with Crystal, and that was a big hit.
Okay.
And I think we should do a survey with the town and just have an annual weekend and rain date. We'll put out a feeler for, you know, most of the towns around us have an annual one.
Right.
And it, it really, it just makes all the traffic be on one, one weekend instead of every single weekend, there's something going on. So I thought we would include a survey, we would include that with our survey.
With the Survey Monkey, okay.
Yep, and that's all.
All right. Thank you. Budget process.
Good evening. So I was able to introduce myself to Laura. I'm just real quick for the meeting. Let's slide step for just a moment. Laura, another client of ours is Maryville. They have a pretty vibrant website now that they, over the last two years, maybe have.
Maryville?
Reestablished.
Okay.
I don't remember the cost.
Okay.
But there are a lot of capabilities in it, and I think at the bottom of this, it says power by.
Yeah.
So you could take a look at it.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
For what purpose?
I'll be honest with you, I really like Long Beaches.
Yeah.
But they pay $7,000 a year at South of Raleigh.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really interactive.
It's real interactive, and it does texting and email.
Make updates and very, very early with a lot of things, and it's real simple for them, but yeah, it does cost too, so.
Right.
All right, so that's your process. I wanted to stop by tonight and, of course, introduce myself. I have a webinar coming up this year. We're going to do that quickly. And then just remind council that the budget is coming, and that it's coming quickly. I'm going to jump ahead, because it's easier to explain why we need to get started now with what's coming in the future. The budget needs to be voted on by November 1st, which we usually just say the end of October for the ease of conversation. For you in Trail Creek, having one meeting a month, that would mean that you'll need to vote on the budget at your October regular meeting. You always at any time, as you know, can have a special meeting if you need to. The budget does require two hearings, just like you did the process here with the additional appropriation. Coming closer than the first reading would be the month prior in September. For the budget purpose, the public hearing happens at that September meeting. And then I give you time after that to consider if there are any public comments considered during that next month before you vote. In order for that public hearing to happen, it needs to be advertised ten days prior, like many of our other financial hearings do. That is actually done through the Gateway System, though, which is an Indiana state-run web based platform. If you haven't been on it yet, it's, it's meant for public transparency. So we put the proposed budget in, it becomes its own advertisement, we don't have to pay to put it in the newspaper, which is kind of nice. It does take a little bit of time to get that information, all the line items in your budget into the system, and so we need several days to do that. So that puts us into the end of August.
That's next month.
We need some time typically for council to discuss some ideas, they'll get some expenses, see if there's anything from '23 or now '24 that needs to be amended, looking forward into '25. How many projects are on the horizon? Of course, conversation of raises is always important, as well as the revenue projections that we'll do for you, so that you know what you can afford to be able to budget. In the next week or so, the state will release some of the revenue projections that we use from their perspective, from the taxes they expect to collect. Things like the motor vehicle, the gas tax, local road and street taxes, those go on a roll through your average historically, and so they give us a prediction on what they've collected so far that they're prepared to pay out in the future. It will also have prediction, a state prediction on the income tax, which is your living money, the local income tax. We have enough information that we can predict for you the property taxes, and we'll pause for just a moment and share, in June, when you receive your first property taxes of the year, again, they come June and December, you received about 270,000 for the general fund. The prediction is that for the entire year, you would receive about 520,000. So you receive just a little bit more than half, which is great. Sometimes that student people may be catching up if they were delivering the year before. There are some people that will pay both May and the property taxes due in May. So sometimes you do have a little bit of a heavier front-end collection in June than you do in December. As well, when we give you the prediction for property taxes, we do do that a little bit conservatively for you, so that when you plan your budget based on the revenue that we suggest for you, you can be confident that at least that much money should be coming into your coffers. We would hate to overpredict and try to get too on the penny. Maybe have a few people not pay their taxes, and then all of a sudden, now, you've planned the budget that you can't afford. So I'm always happy to report that the June distribution, and hopefully the December, brought in a little bit more revenue than we expected, so that you have a little bit of wiggle room to finish up the year. So at the August meeting, then, unless you would like to schedule a special workshop time in between, I'll come back, bring some revenue predictions for you, you can look through those, have some conversations about, again, projects that need to come forward. A workshop is done by many communities, by the council, at some point in between the regular meetings, just to have some conversation. It is open, the public has to be advertised 48 hours ahead. No decisions can be made, the votes can be had, but conversation can be had, and it's important sometimes to have those discussions. So that will be the plan. I'll put together some proposed budget numbers based on what you've spent over the last few years. I'll look at that with Crystal. It's obviously her first year in office, and it'll be her first budget as well. So I'll explain how some of that works. We always use some historical spending to give you some ideas about what the next year's budget could be, and then it's up to you to see if you want to make any changes in two weeks along the way, based on email that's going on in the town's schedule. I think that's really about it to remind and extend the process. Any questions? For now?
Not for now.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have plenty coming in the future.
And I'll put together also some fund projections, which is a year by year, kind of look to see how your cash balances are doing, how the spending trends have happened, whether you have an upward trend or a downward trend as far as revenues and cash balance. It's always going to have some cash balance in the bank for some emergencies and things, so that's all part of what I'll be giving you here in the next couple of stuff.
Pete, can I add on the heels of that, to the extent, I'm not sure if you'll have a workshop, but I want to encourage you to do that.
Yeah.
You know, in the past, sometimes.
We have in the past.
Yeah, those surprises, and that everybody attending, participate and review would be fair, because, yeah, in the past, once you get to the public hearings and they do those, yeah, that's process, and yes, there's still opportunities to change, but sometimes that's the first time someone looks at it, or it's a surprise, or someone forgets. So participating early is where a lot of the heavy lifting is done.
Agreed.
Those numbers. The rest, not that there isn't still process and decisions to be made, but a lot of the work goes in way before that, so they can get through the process, and we don't have to continue public hearings and save you for the first time.
So when would your suggestion be to have our first workshop, if we were to have a workshop? In order to be on a good timeframe, time schedule?
Honestly, before the next meeting would be.
So before the August meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if it's, you know, the week of the 12th. Let's see, the 16th today, right?
Uh, yeah, yes.
I can have things ready as early as August 5th, so sometime in those two weeks, whatever works well for everyone. I know typically your meetings are at 7:00. I'm available in the early afternoon as well, whatever's best for all of you. And I'm not objecting to the evening meetings at all, just simply letting you know that there's. that there's lots of options.
So without Mrs. Heat, Mrs. Heat being here, um, I would like to schedule something now, but obviously she, she'll have to be present. So without her here, that's something that we'll probably have to schedule not inside our council meeting. So we'll just have to get together and decide on a day. But, uh, you said August 12th would be good for you?
Anytime that meets, probably.
Okay.
That Tuesday night would be bad.
Okay.
Other than that, I think it's probably available.
All right, we'll anticipate the week of the August 12th, of August 12th then.
Not the 13th.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That's when, uh, department gets part of this hustle and they should have their numbers ready.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll send some emails about that.
Okay.
To have them submit their requests and talk about things they need.
All right. Public comment. Is anyone in the public, in the chambers, see maybe would like to make a comment? Please step up, step up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Tim Bartlett, 417 Black Oak Drive. I've been a resident almost 47 years and I'm here to make a complaint about the building at Lumwood Drive and 20. Now I've talked to, uh, Trail Creek, they don't own that property. They have no control over that. I've talked to the city, that is actually a piece of county property. Okay? It's been vacant for what, 30 years?
I don't know the building.
It's been a long time. It's an eyesore on 20.
I think I know where it's going.
It's owned by a company out of East Chicago. They're about six months behind in their taxes. Now I'm asking the town board to approach the county council and see if we could get that demolished. If they can go after them with eminent domain, there's got to be a way. You, it's got to be infested.
Have you gone in front of the county council and expressed your?
No. I was hoping someone here would have a little bit more, uh, an in with the county council than me. So I'm approaching the board to see what they can do.
Okay. But I, my first question to you was obviously if you, if you've gone to the county council, that would be what I would do if, if I were to lodge a complaint, I would go to the actual entity that owns the property or that where the property actually, the...
Well, it's East Chicago.
No, 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 I'm saying the, the entity where the, the property is actually located. So it's not located within Trail Creek proper.
No, but it sure looks like Trail Creek, doesn't it, when you come by?
Unfortunately, we have no control over property that's not in Trail Creek.
I understand that. But why hasn't anybody brought that up?
I, I honestly, I...
It's on 20, it looks like Trail Creek and it's been an eyesore. And you can't tell me there's not mold in there and maybe mice and rats, infestation?
Do you have property close to there or?
No, I don't. I live on Black Oak.
Okay, right, right, I understand that.
Right. But I would think that you would, I don't really know anybody at the county council. I'm sure somebody here does.
Pete, I know it's outside of your normal procedure. My suggestion would be that if you talk to the county building commission and in fact they have been reinvigorated as of the last year or so in terms of cracking down on such properties and the building commission currently, I believe is still on 8th Street in those county buildings. Mr. Coolin and his staff are, are very receptive to looking.
It's on 8th Street where the health department used to be?
Yeah, right now they're temporarily located. I believe they're still there. If they're not, they, they're back in the county office, but I believe that they're still there. But they're very receptive, so not really starting with the commissioners or council at this point, but that building commission there, and Mr., like I said, Mr. Coolin and his staff, they, they, I have found they're very receptive and think those things pretty serious.
Although I just am underst- not understanding why the town of Trail Creek hasn't noticed that for how many years and, and tried to approach the problem and take care of it.
I would say primarily because it's not within the town of Trail Creek.
Did you know it was in the county?
Uh, yes, I did.
You did?
Yeah, I do know that is, yeah, that. I only know that because of what I do for a living and it's a, it's, I go by the addresses and I know how the addresses are, so I understand that that is definitely a county property.
I would have never thought that was county property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are a lot of people like, uh, I think Sunnyside is also county property if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Takes a weird cut.
Yeah, it's, it's very odd right there.
Really odd cut in there. The county, this county goes to, I think it goes to Wellmans and then it goes west almost down to, uh, Woodland.
All right, I'll go ahead and do that. I'll approach them. And if I'm not getting anywhere, I would hope I could come back.
I was going to say, if you don't get anywhere with them, then please come back to us and let us know what you, what, what they told you.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Now, one more thing, I have one more question. There are people that are parking their cars on their lawn and trying to sell cars in Trail Creek. Is that allowable? Is that something we can do?
I know.
Car for sale on your front lawn?
We do have an ordinance against that.
Okay.
Uh, Marshall, if you'd like to expound on that potentially or possibly or?
Somebody's put a car on their front lawn, check for early.
Uh, Steve has been for a long time.
Where's that?
Uh, corner of Lumwood and Wellmans.
They have two of them. They have two of them, an old one and a cattle.
Now I don't mind anybody wanting to sell their car, but it's been there a long time, a long time.
Oh, I, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. I, I was trying to think, yes, I, I know exactly what we're talking about now, yes.
Right. And trust me, when I came to Trail Creek 47 years ago, I didn't want to come to a trailer park. I wanted to come to a beautiful subdivision and everybody takes care of their property. And if we have rules on the books, then I think we need to enforce them.
I agree.
Okay, people aren't happy with enforcement, but it has to be done. Now what if you don't cut your lawn and your lawn's about that high? What do we do about that?
We send them a notice in the mail.
Okay, there's a house on the corner of Black Oak and Wellmans. I don't know if it's in the process of being sold and, right, right on the corner of Black Oak. So I think it's a two bedroom home right there on the corner.
Brick house?
It's a brick, yeah.
I'll look at it tomorrow when you're around.
Appreciate that. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment? Uh, clerk comment? No clerk comment? Council comment?
Nothing?
Hearing no council comment? Uh, I, uh, would like to know if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7:38.